...of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the October sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. Motion for approval by Mrs. Vandecleut, seconded by Mr. Scarry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of bills transfer of funds. Motion for approval by Mr. Scarry. Mr. Benedetto.
Do I have a few questions about the bills? The first, the biggest question I have is there's, there's a charge of Nefen High School this lady's charges. It is through a whole budget process and I added them all up and it's twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. I was just wondering what goes with this lady's tax activity.
Yes, these are your student activity accounts. These are all student activities.
I don't know why they just go right that way because I thought you had to do that many times. Is that the same with the wallets, the nine digits?
Yes. Anything with the first three digits of eight, nine, zero is your student activity accounts.
No, I don't know that. And I did have another question. On page nine, thirty-six, a little bit more than halfway down, Philan Associates and Corporates, one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-six, which says others apply. And I was just wondering where this account goes apply to.
That's a revolving account. So that is within one of the production areas.
One of the what?
The production areas for revolving accounts. It's not the general fund. So it'd be one of the ancillary accounts.
Okay. And then my last question is on page twenty-eight, thirty-six. It says the vendor name is Teachers Twenty-One and it's two hundred dollars in the account set school.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the?
Yeah, page twenty-eight, thirty-six. It's the eighth line and the vendor name says Teachers.
Oh, Teachers Twenty-One? Yes, that's a contract that we have for service provided through an internet provision for professional development and instruction under a grant.
It's just ways at school, like what, like more.
Again, that's through a grant, so the grant descriptions are not as extensive.
Thank you.
Okay. There's a motion for approval by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Mr. Benedetto. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of perils. Motion for approval by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Ms. Crutz. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Report of secretary?
None.
None. Report of committees? None.
I just want to share the news.
I stopped by the. Yes, I stopped by the library a couple of weeks ago and I have, you know, some cool news. So I'm not sure if everybody's seen it, but at the library, there's a new electronic sign-in iPad and it's, so far what the students do is they can sign in and they can track how many students are in the library throughout the day and it's electronically goes into a data like a Google spreadsheet and they can quickly run reports and send it to, you know, the headmaster, principals, and they can give the total number of students that are in the library at any point in time. And it's just a great resource and I just wanted to share that news with everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crutz. Ms. Mustown, motion for suspension?
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to hear the report out of order of Project Three Fifty-One?
This is motion on the floor for suspension of rules, all seconded by Ms. Vandecleut. All those in favor? All those opposed? Suspension is granted. Report on Project Three Fifty-One. Mr. Superintendent?
Did you, was it Mr. Deleva?
I'm sorry.
Mayor and members of the school committee, as you know, Project Three Fifty-One was started by Governor Patrick, who was an attempt to provide leaders who come from our middle schools and they would do community service. Now, we've done this for a number of years and this evening, we have two representatives, one from the McGlin and one from the Andrews. And right now, we'll call upon our principal, Paul Deleva, to introduce the person from the Andrews.
Would you like to step up here?
Yes, okay.
Ms. Heineck?
Either one's fine. So, good evening, members of the school committee. As you know, every year, we participate in Project Three Fifty-One. It's a great project that has been done with the Andrews and the McGlin, having representatives to do, to develop leaders as well as come up with community service projects for our school individually. As you know, they meet on Martin Luther King Day as a big group and they develop their projects through discussions with everybody, through the school. I'd like to welcome Ava Heineck, who is the daughter of Max Heineck, who is also a school teacher at the Medford High School. Mr. Heineck and I share a little bit of camaraderie because we were both at the Brooks Hobbs at one point together, on the same team. So it's kind of a, comes to full circle that his daughter is being represented for Project Three Fifty-One. So I'd like to introduce Ava Heineck.
Hi. Okay, so I would like to start by saying, in what an honor it is to represent the Andrews Middle School. This is a vital opportunity for me and I am so thankful to be given a chance to be part of something that could be so beneficial to our community, to meet other kids and be able to converse and share ideas that could impact people in need is such an amazing thing. I'm so proud to represent Medford because it has been such a large part of my life, doing town soccer, volunteering at the library, and farmer's market, attending public school here, and dancing at a local studio, O'Cheryl A. Sullivan's, and even doing school plays and Builders Club, that's a community service club at the Andrews. And, and so I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of Project Three Fifty-One. Thank you.
I also want to mention, she's joined by her mom Wendy and her sister Stella, who are here, and Wendy's a teacher as well.
Any questions? Ms. Cunha.
First of all, congratulations Ava.
Thank you.
I actually participated in that a few years back and I, it was just an amazing, amazing day. If you're not involved with it, unfortunately, and we didn't know about it, but I had the opportunity to go down and to see students from all over the state really working together. And what a camaraderie for students that really didn't know each other at the beginning of the day to really become very friendly by the end of the day. And they are all working really for the cause of a larger community. So, I mean, it's just amazing and I want to thank you and I also want to thank the other students for representing Medford so well, but I have a question for you and that is, what is it that you did?
That I did?
That day.
Well, she hasn't.
I haven't gone yet.
Oh, you haven't gone yet?
She hasn't gone yet.
What did I think about the Luther King? That's right, I am sorry. So come back and let us know what you did.
I will.
But congratulations.
Thank you.
For some reason, I thought I went by.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We also want to announce that Sumaya Omi, I don't know if she's present this evening? She's not here, from the McGlin Middle School. We send her our regards as well and we hope to see her after Martin Luther King Day as well.
Motion on the floor to revert to the regular order of business by Ms. Quinn Mustown. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion to accept the report and place on file. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Community participation, Melanie McLaughlin, CPAC update. Mr. Benedetto.
I got an email from Melanie right before our meeting. She's homesick and she would have to cancel for this evening and postpone.
So motion to table her?
Motion to table.
Request for participation. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Mustown.
Is it, I am aware that the McGlin School has requested to be part of the community participation program, but it's not listed, so I was wondering if it's something that we could get from?
Is there someone from the McGlin that wanted to come up and speak?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. Charlene Douglas, President of the Met Teacher Association, four one four High Street, Medford, Massachusetts. First of all, I'm having candy because I had garlic at dinner. Thank you, we appreciate, we appreciate having the meeting with you and the superintendent to discuss the middle school action plan. Roy, I did receive your email today with a date of December sixth for us to move forward on this. I will poll the teachers to see if this date works and if it does work, we will have that meeting. We assume that you and the school committee members will meet us at the McGlin Middle School on that day if it's approved. I also, as promised to Mr. Belson, have the binders illustrating our concerns regarding the original plan and I would like to share those with you tonight. So I'd like to ask Ryan McCarthy and Brian Vallad to give those to you now so you'll have time to look those over prior to our meeting on the sixth. They're color-coded, very teacher. Very teacher.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one to Mr. Belson and one to the mayor? Do you have enough? Does Mr. Belson get one? Great, okay, we'll accept. No.
Thank you.
He doesn't, no. I don't know.
Thank you.
I don't think so. I mean, it's up to you, I don't think he needs it though. Okay? All right. So lastly, our members are here tonight to show support for the grievances you were here later tonight. So I'm going to ask all those teachers here that support the grievances to please stand. And I want to thank you for your solidarity and to let you know these people are here in support of these grievances.
Thank you very much.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas.
Bye now.
Report of superintendent and recommendation to appoint Dr. Patrick Savia as school physician. Mr. Superintendent?
Mayor and members of the school committee, I'm going to call upon Tony Vento, our health supervisor, to introduce Dr. Patrick Savia. Dr. Kristen Goodell has taken a position at Boston University as a dean and she's done a great job for us and Dr. Savia is going to do a great job for us. We met the other day and we're really excited to have him on board, but I'm going to let Tony introduce him and let Dr. Savia make a few remarks and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, Ms. Vento.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Patrick Savia as our new school physician. He practices in Medford with Medford Family Care. He's had over twenty-five years of practice in many community health centers, including Cambridge Health Alliance and the Greater Lawrence Family Health Center and also out at Metro West Medical Center. He's on the Tufts faculty, teaching family medicine residents. He's been a member of different quality improvement committees at while at Cambridge Health Alliance and was director of obstetrics. So we're, we're very excited to have him follow the good steps of Dr. Goodell and we appreciate her good service and we look forward to working with Dr. Savia.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Ms. Vandecleut. Approval? There's a motion on the floor for approval, seconded by Mr. Scarry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Benedetto?
Excuse me, I believe Ms.
Oh, sorry, roll call?
Yeah.
What kind of needs do we usually call upon?
Draw on, just so people understand.
Well, the doctors will sit on our school health advisory committee where we discuss different health and wellness issues. We make, you know, plans for different initiatives. Some of the initiatives we have done have been like different health policies, setting up parent education forums, getting the expert screening going, Narcan training. So we always, you know, we will consult with the school physician on that. He'll also consult with our athletic trainer and review the concussion and injury, athletic injury reports on a season-by-season basis. Let's see, I mean, if, if a case came up that, like the tuberculosis outbreak that we had last year, that exposure, we consulted with Dr. Goodell on how to move through and handle that. So basically, any type of health concern that we feel we, we just want support and consultation on, I can reach out to him.
Thank you.
Good. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you. Roll call vote.
Ms. Cunha? Yes. Ms. Benedetto? Ms. Crutz? Yes. Yes, seven and affirmative, zero and the negative, motion passes. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item three, report on Tier Two E-Rate Funding Award.
Mr. Superintendent?
So this particular report is letting you know that the federal government has now approved our E-Rate Tier Two funding, which is a substantial amount of money. It needs to be matched. If it's approved here this evening, that will go forward. I'll go to the city council at a future date to ask for the matching funds that will allow us to expand our infrastructure, to support our networks, to increase our switches and all the other aspects of the infrastructure that supports technology. Kirstine Patterson is lead person locally on this and she's going to tell you a little bit more about it.
Yes, thank you, members of the committee. This is very exciting news for us as not all school districts that request the category two funding receive it. So this is very significant. Within the three categories that we applied for funding, we received funding for the firewalls in the amount of seventeen thousand fifteen dollars. For wireless internet connectivity, we received a hundred and one, six hundred and forty-nine dollars. And within the switches and the internal connections, we received two hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and eighty-six dollars from the federal match. So this is very significant, with sixty percent of the overall project cost being funded by the federal government. So we are hopeful to receive the approval to move forward and request the city-side match for this very important infrastructure improvement that will help all, all of our schools, school buildings as well. Again, the coordination, scheduling still needs to be taken into consideration as this, this is a very extensive project. Even with the approvals, we would not be able to actually begin the work until toward the end of June of twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So this would be likely a summer project so that has the least impact on instruction and the, the school day.
Did you say work will begin in twenty seventeen or eighteen?
I'm sorry, eighteen, yes, so.
June of eighteen.
Correct. Because we have to get the funding in line now, we have to provide the approval for a city-side match, then we engage the contractor, issue the purchase orders, and then start the scheduling out. But because of the massive amounts of infrastructure and the downtime that that would create, we don't want to actually begin that until we have enough time where we don't have instruction going on in critical moments. I mean, there could be some that would be attempted to be done during the school vacation weeks, but the majority, the, the major switches and those components would be done likely in July of twenty eighteen.
Ms. Vandecleut.
So is this, then, do we need to go before the city council to ask for this match?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Yes, and would this be part of a capital improvement plan or would this be a standalone?
I would anticipate a free cash vote.
Okay, and so that we need to move on this relatively quickly?
We need to vote tonight so that we can.
Right, so I make a motion for approval because obviously, any, anything that we can do to improve our infrastructure is absolutely worth doing. And so I make a motion to approve and to send this forward to the city council for their approval.
For the matching amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Is there a second on this motion? Second. Mr. Benedetto.
Thank you. So through you to the superintendent, if you need school committee members to go with you, to the city council to ask for matching funds, I'm offering to be available.
Okay.
And stand with you because technology is so important and especially all the firewall and all the protective things, we just really need this and we need to keep growing with technology and I'm sure that they'll agree, but if you would like any help going forward, just, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Will you be appearing in front of the city council?
I'll work that out the date with the mayor and based on what's on their calendar.
And then I reiterate, the council, that way we can have two.
Okay.
Very good. There's a motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Scarry and Mr. Benedetto. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cunha? Yes. Ms. Benedetto?
Yes.
Ms. Crutz? Ms. Mustown? Mr. Scarry? Yes. Ms. Vandecleut? Yes, seven and affirmative, zero and the negative, motion passes.
Thank you very much for that. Report on Veterans Day Program.
So every year, we have a Veterans Day program and Dr. Bernadette Riccadelli is the coordinator and she's going to come up and tell you about the program.
Good evening, Mayor Burke, Superintendent Belson, and members of the Medford School Committee. Tonight, I am here to report on a longstanding tradition on the secondary level in the Medford Public Schools. It's one of my favorite events and this year was, was no exception. So the Medford Public Schools and the Office of Veteran Services here at Medford City, City Hall have teamed up over the course of the past seventeen years to provide students and faculty on the high school level, the opportunity to learn about combat and non-combat-related experience of our city's veterans. And from all accounts, this program has been enormously successful and it's been fulfilling not only to our students, but also to the adults, the teachers and administrators who have seen the speeches that these veterans give. This year's program occurred on Thursday, November second, and was co-coordinated with the Director of Veteran Services, Ernest Lindsay. The day began early in the morning before period one in the superintendent's conference room. We were treated to a light breakfast. The mayor, Mayor Burke, did attend this, as did super, school committee member Kathy Kratz. They greeted the veteran speakers and we all participated in the welcoming address, which included the pledge of allegiance and a brief introduction by each of the participants. This year, twenty-seven veterans from several eras, including the Vietnam War, the Persian Gulf War, and the Iraq War, visited thirty-eight classes and gave an overview of their experiences and contributions. Sadly though, this year, we did not have any World War II veterans or Korean-era veterans. Over the time that I have been organizing this event, each year, you get fewer and fewer of members from, from those eras. The program provides our students with an oral history of personal experiences that enhances their study of history in the classroom. Feedback from students, teachers, and veterans from this year's program has been overwhelmingly positive. We are thankful to Dunkin' Donuts and Wes Medford for donating coffee and a generous assortment of, of treats for breakfast. They've done so for the past, I believe, seventeen years. We really want to shout out to Dunkin' Donuts and Wes Medford. Would also like to thank grade twelve Medford Vocational Technical High School student, Noah Kratz, for displaying many items from his vintage military collection and engaging our guests in meaningful conversations about the importance of historical artifacts and understanding our nation's history. Again, one of the proudest things that I think we offer is this program and I am thrilled that we are seventeen years strong into it. I'm happy to take any questions.
Nice job, Ms. Riccadelli.
Thank you. Program. Thank you.
Actually, for Ms. Riccadelli. Bernadette, would you? It's okay, no problem. Actually, my question is, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to all the veterans that come each and every year. As you said, it's been a seventeen-year program that you've been running and it's been fabulous because I know the students get a lot out of it, just as much as the veterans do. And also, a thank you, if we can, send a letter to Mr. Lindsay, who's the director of the veterans, just to, just as a, as a thank you note from us. But the other thing is, is that you were speaking of, we don't have the veterans anymore from certain eras. Is it possible, I mean, I don't know, this is just to throw it out there, but maybe invite like children of the veterans from that era that have heard the stories, that still have stories to share and just give an insight to our students from that era?
I, I think that's, that's a great suggestion. I actually have a ninety-six-year-old uncle who was in World War II, went down in, in two ships, used to live in Ninety Side and Riverside Ave. I've been trying to get him to come because he tells a great story, but he really is just very shy and gets very emotional at, at the stories that, that he shares with his, his closest family. I think that's a wonderful suggestion, I certainly will work on it. As I think about, even though I know his stories, I certainly could not do them the justice that, that he would. But again, I think it's a great suggestion. If I could just say one other thing, Nicole Chiesa, Dr. Nicole Chiesa is the Director of Humanities. So in her absence, she's still on, on a leave of absence, I stepped in this year. So I believe, not this year, but the prior three years, Nicole did organize it with Nick Kane, so I don't want it to be misleading that I've been doing this for seventeen years and certainly there have been several of us in the process over those seventeen years.
Thank you. Oh, you're welcome. And also a letter to Mr. Crutz. Noah's been an amazing asset to a lot of these programs and his enthusiasm and his experience, even though he hasn't thankfully gone, but he does have a lot of knowledge. So it's really nice to see a young student.
It's great.
Who shares that.
It's great. Mr. Benedetto?
Thank you. So, so given that your uncle's shy and that you'd love him to come, but he's not capable of, can't you video him telling his story and bring it forward that way?
I've suggested that to him.
Just on your phone even?
You know.
Because then you can transfer it, we have the technology up there now, and maybe just even your conversation with him. I mean, it might impact greatly and it might be something that your family will always charge her as well. And my second thing is, could you send a thank you note to the Dunkin' Donuts as well of seventeen years of providing food for?
Wes Medford.
Wes Medford.
For all of them. You know, at twenty years, we should have them come in and, you know, give them a golden doughnut.
Give them some donuts? We'll give them some donuts.
On the paper, as amended, that thank yous be sent out to the respective parties. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor Burke, I just wanted to say thank you also. I want to say.
Ms. Crutz?
Thank you to all the veterans for coming out to discuss your, their experiences with the students. And I want to give a very special thanks to Ernst Lindsay, Bernadette Riccadelli for organizing the program. And I just wanted to share, I mentioned from Noah and he said, you know, he really, really enjoys doing this program and it's a pleasure going to all the veterans programs. He also went to the VFW program and he showed his collection with the Cub Scouts, Weebleows, and the veterans that attended that program. So it's just something, his passion that he really likes to do and he wished he could be here tonight, but he has work. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Crutz. Recommendation to accept major gift from Stop &amp; Shop to Vocational School and Food Service Program, Mr. Superintendent?
Mayor and members of the school committee, tonight, we're going to prove there is such a thing as a free lunch. So Kirstine is going to cover that for us.
Yes, if I could have it noted, the Director of Finance is bringing you money this evening, not taking it away. Yes, we're very excited to present that our Felsway Local Stop &amp; Shop has generously given the intended donation of ten thousand dollars to the new Vocational Bistro four-eighty-nine. And they are also going to fund one full day of lunch for the entire district, which is the equivalent of seven thousand five hundred dollars. So we're very excited.
We need a roll call. Is there a motion to accept this gift? Motion to accept by Mr. Scarry, seconded, seconded by Ms. Cunha, you have a question?
I have my question.
Okay.
We just need.
Ms. Vandecleut?
You know, it's a wonderful thing. I'm sure we're going to be very conscientious of making sure that we have lunches for all kids, no matter what their allergies might be or something like that.
Absolutely, that's always a consideration on every menu.
Okay, and the second question I had to do, had to do with, in the report, it said, as discussed, a sign signifying Stop &amp; Shop's donation will be placed inside the bistro and we will receive content, i.e. photos for marketing and media relations purposes. food stores for donations as well or for assistance. And so I just want to make sure that because Stop &amp; Shop has their sign, that it is open to other, perhaps generous givers in the future.
Absolutely. In our discussions, we indicated, you know, the possibility of some, you know, nominal-sized plaque recognizing their generous donation at the startup of the program. Does not preclude anyone else, any other significant donations and subsequent plaques and acknowledgement.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Ms. Benedetto?
Thank you. I just want to know how we're spending the $10,000.
We haven't gotten it yet, so I don't want to spend it until we've actually received.
I know, but what's the plan?
The deck?
I think it's going to the deck.
The deck? Oh, it's for a physical piece, not like to stock with?
Right.
Because we're going to have to stock the kitchen at some point.
Well, it'll be stocked.
Yeah, okay.
But the donation of the deck appears to be what's ticketed for.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
December fourth is the opening.
December fourth, and it's cast in stone?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, December fourth. Grand opening. Ribbon cutting. Yes. A motion on the floor for roll call vote for approval of the gift.
Mrs. Cunha?
Yes.
Mrs. Benedetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Scarry?
Yes.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative.
Thank you.
Motion is accepted and we'll send a letter of thanks to Jim Allen, the store manager of Stop &amp; Shop Medford. Recommendation to approve foreign language NYC trip.
So we have a couple of foreign language approvals in front of us tonight. We talked about them at our committee of the hall, so Reader is here. First of all, let me congratulate Reader publicly for her award from the Italian Association for her outstanding work as an Italian teacher and administrator promoting programs and Italian culture. The other evening.
Thank you.
The other evening, Friday evening, at the TriDoc, the Innovation Center, Reader was there, receiving products from a whole pile of people who are involved in Italian culture, including the Council General. And Reader deserves all the work, all the credit that she gets.
Thank you. As the superintendent said, the two items that have to do with me on the agenda were brought up last week at the committee of the hall. So the first one is asking your approval for the New York trip for December seventeenth and eighteenth. The seventeenth is a Sunday, so students would only be missing one day of school. This field trip is offered only to the AP Italian students of Ms. Canetta's class, and it's only ten students. They did a unit on the opera and they really fell in love with the opera and they went to see an opera in Boston. And then as a follow-up activity, they Skyped with an opera singer. And she revealed that she's going to be singing at Carnegie Hall on the evening of the seventeenth and students really wanted to go see her. Her, the program for the seventeenth is on a rediscovered Italian composer, opera composer, and so they're going to be dedicating the evening to this composer, Aldo Finzi. And the opera singer, whose name is Elizabeth Hertzemberg, sent the poetry of the songs that she's going to be singing, of course in Italian, to the students and they are studying that poetry in class. So it'll be a really meaningful field trip for them. We received $3,000 scholarship, or $3,000 from the Michelin Pietrangelo Scholarship Fund to cover the expenses. So it's at no cost to students. The $3,000 covers everything, the bus, the concert, the hotel, and everything. Both Ms. Canetta and I will serve as chaperones and we will be traveling to New York by bus, attend the concert that Sunday evening, and return to Medford the next day.
Motion for approval by Ms. Cunha. Ms. Benedet, I'm sorry. Ms. Vanderklut?
I just had a question about the bus. Is this a bus, a private bus for these students?
No, it's not a private bus. It's a mega bus that leaves from South Station and goes right to New York City.
Right. I figured for the price it had to be, but I just wanted to make sure. I hope you guys have a wonderful time. I wish I was going with you.
Thank you.
There's a motion not for approval, but opted by Ms. Cunha, seconded by Ms. Mustone. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Cunha?
Yes.
Mrs. Benedetto? Mrs. Kratz? Mrs. Mustone?
Yes.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks.
At this point, we would like to invite someone up to the podium, including you. Sandra Figueroa.
Sandra Figueroa.
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 Come on up, Sandra. Come on up.
Come up there.
This is a report on a foreign language scholarship. The Medford Public Schools is proud to recognize Sandra Figueroa. Outstanding achievement in the study of Italian, FAA USA, 2017 scholarship recipient. Congratulations.
Sandra's going to say something in Italian? Okay.
Por ser a tutti, voglio dire grazie alla signora e alla mia signora, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. Mia maestra, la signora Canetta, per avermi scelto per questo borsa di studio. Io amo la lingua italiana, io amo la cultura. Io parlo lo spagnolo e volevo una sfilta. E ho scelto l'italiano perché è una bella lingua e voglio usarla nel futuro nei miei studi. Inoltre, voglio dirle grazie alla signora Bono Corsi perché lei era la mia prima maestra.
Translate a little bit, okay. What Sandra said, that she's very happy to be studying Italian. She loves Italian and she hopes to continue with Italian in college. She thanked me, I don't know why, but her teacher, her AP teacher, and also her middle school teacher, who's CM, is Bono Corsi.
Very nice. Excellent. Congratulations. Very nice. Thank you.
But actually, there was one part that Mr. Carlo has missed, and that is, Sandra also said that she does speak Spanish and because she had the opportunity of taking Italian, that she fell in love with the language and the culture. And so that's an important piece because no matter how many languages we speak as a district, when we have the opportunity, and here I have to say thank you to CASIT because CASIT is where it starts, in the elementary schools. So, and it continues through the middle schools and it continues to the high school. And it's a great opportunity for CASIT, but also a great opportunity for us and to thank all the teachers that have always been involved. So thank you.
Medford High School Student Representative, Justin Sang, would like to say a few words.
I would like to reinforce what we just said and that students at Medford High are so, we are so dedicated to learning and a bunch of us are so dedicated to learning foreign languages. And I wanted to thank Mr. Carlo. We don't say thank you enough for all that you've done to us. And especially, especially those of you in eighth class, they all love you so much. Also, I wanted to add that Medford in the future, as we move forward to a more globalized and a more open world, we should continue with all of the efforts that we put into our language learning.
Very nice. Nice job, Justin. This, I believe one of those scholarships came from the Joe Pachi and son of Boston and Saugus Companies. Am I correct, Mr. Carlo? Joe Pachi put up the funds for the scholarship. Very good. There's a motion to receive this report and place it on file?
Yep.
Opted by Ms. Vanderklut, seconded by Mr. Benedetto. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Recommendation to approve Skills USA Conference Participation, Mr. Superintendent.
Is Mr. Fallon here? Chad?
I didn't see Chad. I didn't see him.
I didn't see him. Okay. So I'll just give the report.
Okay.
A little miscommunication there. So each year, members of the student body at the vocational school attend the Fall State Leadership Conference in Marlboro, Skills USA. And this year is no exception and we're going to be sending a couple of teachers and four students. It will be paid for by grant money. They'll be staying overnight so that they can participate in the full range of activities and we need the school committee to approve it so that we can take this trip on Skills USA.
Motion to approve? Ms. Vanderklut?
You know, this is an excellent thing and of course, we're going to approve it, but I just want to set the record straight. In terms of timeliness of us receiving this, I believe the students left yesterday and are returning tomorrow.
Yeah, it was unfortunately a situation where Mr. Fallon is new to our system and didn't realize that we needed to come into us. We wanted to bring it to you, but certainly in the future, we understand, we just want to.
So it's a motion of approval, sort of in retrospect. But it's a great thing and we know that it's wonderful for our students. I'm certainly glad that they're going and I look forward to hearing from them on their return.
There's a motion for approval by Ms. Cunha, seconded by Ms. Kratz. Roll call vote, please. Excuse me?
Since because of the situation that happens, it has happened that they're already going.
We're still approving it.
Yeah, no, why not? But what I'm saying is, can we just add in that when they do come back, we get to see the students.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
Again, to reiterate to Mr. Fallon, I totally understand what they're doing, but they're in progress.
Okay.
On the motion for approval as amended, roll call vote.
Mrs. Cunha?
Yes.
Mrs. Benedetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Kratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Mustone? Mr. Scarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanderklut? Yes, Mayor Burke?
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes. Next up, report on Professional Development Day, November seventh, 2017.
We're calling our assistant superintendent to deliver this report.
Good evening. I'd like to call on Dr. Bernadette Riccadelli to come do the report with me, please. On Tuesday, November seventh, Medford Public Schools and staff participated in our first Professional Development Day for this school year. Elementary staff met at the McGlynn School and participated in grade-level workshops on response to intervention. Teachers Twenty-One, a consulting firm from Newton, Mass., worked with our staff to build a shared understanding of RTI fundamentals and help us consider our next steps. Staff learned about structures, processes, and instructional practices needed for successful implementation of RTI. In addition, staff collaboratively self-assessed current capacities and planned for the next steps for the implementation of RTI. The middle schools participated in Study Island as a universal screening behavioral intervention tool. Teachers learned to utilize Study Island questions and developed fall/winter screener exams for grades six, seven, and eight. Administrators and teachers reviewed behavioral interventions and developed their own pyramid to determine what is considered Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. The Andrews and the McGlynn Schools met at Medford High. Medford High School Vocational and Curtis Tufts participated in workshops regarding specific building-based data collection in focus groups discussions and identified topics from their ongoing partnerships with Harvard University and Boston College. Our paraprofessionals collaborated with each other online curriculum in three research-based modules, independence, positive behavior supports, and effective communication. The Fine Arts Department focused on teaching pathways through the music curriculum as well as concepts in education. Nurses, phys ed, and health education staff participated in safety care recertification training. There were additional workshops in the following areas: technology, library, zones of regulation for early childhood, and related service providers, grade-level and competency portfolios, alternate portfolios, middle school foreign language and curriculum review. We had a jam-packed day on November seventh. I'd like to share with you some of the evaluations from our elementary, middle, and high schools. For elementary, it was the ability to practice strategies in workshops, reinforcement of techniques, that they felt, the teachers felt able to engage, persist, envision, and reflect in the workshops. Relevant topics were discussed. Presenters were knowledgeable and engaging. More time needed to be allowed for staff to collaborate, which is something that we need to work on. There were useful suggestions for RTI and we're hoping to plan return visits for RTI. So none of this is done alone, you know, you've heard the saying, saying it takes a village. So it really does when we get together and organize and plan our Professional Development Day program. I'd like Bernadette to speak a little bit to the middle school and high school reflections. So the reflections of teachers and what they experienced on PD is very important to us as administrators, but then also, I'm a member of the Professional Development Committee, so we will be looking at these comments closely. A lot of good comments and then there are some comments that really offer us some constructive advice on ways that the program could be made even stronger. So this is just a sampling. It certainly isn't everything. I do have a compilation of all of the responses from middle and high school teachers. So for the middle school, some of the strengths were the following. One teacher wrote, quote, "That we were able to create a screener for next year that aligns both middle schools." Another teacher wrote, "The presenter," and that would be Paul Deleva, "adjusted his presentation when he realized the audience needed or wanted something different on the content." Another teacher wrote, "The presenter was a great speaker and made the workshop as interesting as possible. I liked that we were given ample time to play around with the program and he allowed the subject to veer off for more specific questions." Then another prompt asked teachers how the workshop could have been improved. And one teacher wrote, "Focusing on subjects other than English Language Arts and Math." Another teacher wrote, "Chromebooks being provided to all staff during the training." Another teacher wrote, "Altering the order of the program so that the morning, the morning should have been for the McGlynn to go over the basics of RTI, that is, what it is, what is the pyramid, what are the logistics, et cetera." Then the afternoon could have been on how to use Study Island as a tool in RTI and collaborate with grade-level partners from both schools. So again, that's just a snapshot of the middle school teachers' comments. Again, some positive and some where there are things that could be better. With regard to the high school comments, one thing I noticed is many teachers wrote a lot. So some of these are somewhat lengthy, but again, there's only a few of them. So they were asked, in the first prompt, what stood about, what stood out about today's professional development program? One teacher wrote, "The thing that stood out the most was the video we watched in breakout sessions about microaggressions and microaffirmations. It was a nice reminder to choose your words and the way you frame feedback carefully as they can have a big impact on your students and their perceptions." That's certainly something, I know that I like to consider when I'm speaking to people. Another teacher wrote, "Just bringing into awareness the issues our kids are dealing with and the impact we have when making them feel included and capable, as well as happy and productive. A good reminder of how important positive feedback is, our role in helping students finding their purpose, and in helping them to see how what they do here is relevant to the rest of their lives." Another teacher wrote, "This Professional Development Day reminded me of how much the students need me as a teacher to create a safe environment for learning." By safe environment, I mean an include-
By safe environment, I mean an inclusive one, in which I demonstrate to each student that I care about each of them as people, and I believe in their academic capabilities. It reminded me to review my own journey as a professional and to renew my commitment to the profession." And the last comment from a teacher, uh, my, the teacher writes, "My biggest takeaway was that, wow, this is really necessary. However, I don't think that it was received by, by all faculty. I am very familiar with what was presented, and I am well attuned to my passion and my purpose. It is something I live, and it is something I share with my students. However, I thought, I saw that many of my peers were very closed to today's PD day. I think that we, as a faculty, need to be brought through each step in order for people to see the value in this work. I heard many people say that it was too much information at once." So again, all of the feedback is considered, um, seriously, and this was just a snapshot.
Ms. Vanderklut.
No, I didn't have a question.
Are there any questions from the body? Mr. Benedetto?
Um, so, last year at our budget time, there was big talk about adding that more ITI instruction, um, and this year is the year that we're really taking notice of where we are, what we're using it, how we're using it well, and where we're going to need, in case we need that for next year's budget. So, you guys are the experts, but let's hear it, let, we're, at this point, are we utilizing it well? I'll, do, do you foresee us needing some more help in the budget for next year? And I know it will change from now to then, but we need to put the bug in the air for the superintendent, so it's on his radar.
Sure, so, the elementary, um, teachers now have a universal screening tool piloted in just grade one. We're going to take a look at this tool to see if it's something that we want for all of our grade levels. That was our beginning. Um, we wanted to give an overview of response to intervention. Many of our teachers, um, knew a lot about it, because we've done some of this before, but we have a lot of new staff, so we wanted to make sure that they were able to participate. Uh, we did grade level groups, K-1, 2, 3, and 4, 5, and the presenters seemed to be, for the most part, very well-received, um, especially the K-1 presenter. From here, we will have, um, the Professional Development Committee is recommending that we continue with RTI on our mandated PD days. We have one in January and one in February, and we're hoping to continue our training in January and in February, and maybe even on the March PD day. Um, the grade one in all of the elementary schools will be piloting RTI, so they have a specific block of time that will be set aside for teachers to work with each other on RTI. And I think it is the hope that, uh, we get together in March and, or April, to come to a consensus about the best way to roll it out for everyone come next September. Um, additional monies would be helpful, we're going to try to work within the budget to see what we can do with our own staff, they know our children better than anybody else.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor to receive this paper and place it on file?
Receive the paper and place it on file.
Seconded by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Ms. Vanderklut. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Report on MSBA School Maintenance Study, Mr. Superintendent.
Mayor members of the school committee, I think we all know that building maintenance, building condition is a popular topic. Um, the MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Authority, uh, is the authority that's been put in place to assist with renovations, major renovations of schools, but they also try to keep track of where schools are. Now, we all know where the pimples are and where the tiles are missing in any one school in our own world, but when you look at the range of schools across the Commonwealth, we don't do badly. And the report I'm providing you is a report that was done by MSBA, it was done by a field visit to our schools by MSBA, uh, and they went to all the schools across the Commonwealth, virtually all of them, and get to everything, but, um, and they assessed and evaluated several key factors, including building condition, general environment, capacity, technology, security, and maintenance. The study was conducted by architecture, architectural engineers, engineers in general, and who visited each specific building. Now, school buildings that were slated for MSB upgrades, already slated in the pipeline, weren't visited because they already had been out there and done that. The buildings were rated on a four-point scale for general condition and general learning environment. A rating of one was the best, and a rating of four, a four was the lowest. And all buildings were rated for capacity utilization. Underutilization was considered to be eighty percent or less, or below eighty percent, rather, and overutilization was above one hundred and twenty-five percent of the capacity of the building. So I've provided you with selected pages of the MSBA report, it was ninety-six pages, I didn't think you wanted to read it all, but if you do, I can certainly provide it. I picked those pages I thought were relevant to us, and would give us insights as to how they came up with these decisions. But you'll note, if you go down to Medford Schools, and the building condition, all of our schools, with the exception of the high school and the vocational school, were rated one. High school and the vocational school were rated two. But all our buildings for general environment were rated one, based on their study, not something we did for them, not something we told them to say, they came out and rated it with their people. Now, building capacity, um, we fall into the average range in every building, uh, well, Brooks, Columbus, McGlin, and Roberts are considered average, the Andrews, a little bit under, McGlin under, high school under, vocational under, and the Curtis Tufts under, in terms of capacity, in terms of room. Now, people talk to me about, is there capacity to absorb young people into our schools? I'd say yes, because I've looked at this, I gave you a report not that long ago on the impact of development upon enrollment. I'm working on a report that deals with some of the smaller buildings, um, which I, there aren't that many with, with young people in it, but clearly, uh, that is not changing anything, as far as I can see so far. So I think it's important, when people ask us about our building conditions, to recognize that we have had them looked at, there's certainly room for improvement, no one's going to say that we do everything the way it should be done, but clearly, we're not bad compared to buildings, school buildings around the Commonwealth. We'd have put in an SOI to the state, Statement of Interest for the high school and the vocational school. We expect to hear before the first of the year whether or not we will be allowed to go to feasibility study. I believe we're now in a pool of forty-four, there were eighty-eight, we're now down to forty-four, it may be less than that now, uh, since their last visit to us, and hopefully we'll hear about that, and we'll be able to move forward, uh, with the feasibility study, looking at those two major, major buildings. So happy to take any questions you may have.
Ms. Cunha.
Thank you, through you to the superintendent. Is there a way for us to find out how the other schools in our area were graded?
Well, they, they do have that. We're generally better than many others, but there are some, I can get you that.
Well, yeah, I'd like to see the list of the surrounding schools and, and just in general, other schools, too.
The full report, that he only attached one of the pages, but.
Yeah, but it doesn't give that information, just to see.
Yeah, I can get you the rest of it, it just was a lot of pages.
No, and I understand that, and I'm not asking for the whole report, I'm just asking so that way we have an idea of where we rank compared to other cities.
If it's okay with you, what I'll do is I'll pick some area schools and give you, you know, some comparable type schools like Waltham and Winchester.
Okay, and then, I guess my other concern is, we rate, you know, according to their standards, we rated high, is, is that jeopardize any type of grant or anything that we're going to be going for? Because, I mean, because we, we graded very high based on their requisites, I just don't want to jeopardize anything out there that we're waiting for, like capital planning money or anything like that, I mean, are they going to take that into consideration?
Well, obviously, they're going to look at buildings that are poor, uh, but they also want to.
If they put in an SOI.
If they put an app in. And they also want to make sure that buildings that are doing okay stay okay. And there are specific elements of, of our world, like in our world, we want to work on the systems in the, in the high school and the vocational school, we want to work on the shops, we want to work on other aspects of the, of the facility that will enhance it over time. Remember, that building is, what, over forty-five years old now, and so, it's a solid building, it's not going away, but it can use some upgrades. And I think these are the things that, you know, that we want to, want to push with them. So we had a very good meeting with them, I thought when they left, uh, they were very pleased with the kind of tour that we took with them and the information we gave them, but, you know, it's competitive, so we'll find out.
And was the tour across the board, like, when they came to the high school, did they see the whole high school?
Well, they went around the whole place.
Okay, and the same thing with all the other schools?
They went around the whole place.
Okay.
Now, remember, we've got a boiler project from them, we've got the science, science projects from them, you know, we've got some other things from them as well, so it isn't like they have, they've ignored us. But, but clearly, you know, uh, the things we were talking about with them were, uh, I think, well-received.
Okay, I just don't want them, you know, to say that they went into the science labs at the high school and just, you know, assumed that the rest of the schools like that, because it's not.
Well, actually, I turned that around on them, when I said to them, see, your money really was put to good use.
Good, keep on telling them that, because it has to go through the whole district.
We're very good with your money, you should give us more, okay?
Yeah, the whole district.
Ms. Mastone.
Mr. Bellson, the key factors were building condition, general environment, capacity, technology, security, and maintenance. Did they give us a rating in each of those categories of each of the schools?
I think they're composite, the, the report did not break it down.
To see where we have holes, they don't break it down?
They didn't break it down, but, but I can ask, you know, I can ask.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Motion to receive and place on file, opted by Ms. Vanderklut, seconded by Ms. Cunha. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Recommendation to implement succession plan for Superintendent of Schools. And before I pass this over to Roy, uh, he's been with the school system for over forty years, fifty years now?
Fifty.
Fifty years, twenty-three as our superintendent. He has served this community with pride and respect, and I know throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, how he is looked upon. He really is a mentor to new superintendents, and just about any question you ask him, he pretty much knows the answer, it's somewhere in there, and he pulls it out, so it's been an amazing, um, experience to work with you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you.
And I know that this process will be difficult, but of course, it will be positive at the end, we know that we will find someone that will, uh, do things differently and maybe ignite the school system in a little, a different way, so, we will miss you, but we look forward to this process. Mr. Superintendent.
Uh, you want to announce it Monday night, you want to talk about that?
Yes, actually, we've arranged for the, um, school committee, committee.
Uh, MASC.
Yeah, Mass Association of School Committees, to come and visit with us Monday evening, so that we can start this process, and they'll go over generalities of how they've conducted it in other communities, and, uh, determine what steps we want to take next, um, as far as our search for the next superintendent. So that will be Monday.
At six-thirty.
At six-thirty.
November twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, at the high school.
At the high school. Mr. Superintendent.
So in June 2016, the Medford School Committee approved the succession plan for the position of Superintendent of Schools. I have attached a copy of that plan to my remarks this evening. While it's within your discretion to keep, modify, and change the plan, it is a fundamental blueprint to begin the processes of succession and transition, and that will continue on Monday evening, uh, with Glenn Kuchar, who is the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. It has been my privilege and honor to be an educator in Medford, in the Medford Public Schools for fifty years, and to serve as Superintendent of Schools, your Superintendent of Schools, for twenty-three years. I've greatly benefited from the high quality and diligence of professionals, support staff, school committee members, and citizens who have worked with me throughout my career, and I am internally grateful to them for making my tenure and responsibilities as productive and as rewarding as reasonably possible. I've been very fortunate to have seen former students become teachers, administrators, and staff in our schools. I've had the experience of enrolling children and grandchildren of former students. While no one does significant work alone, I've had the opportunity to build new schools, establish a full range of programs, acquire hundreds of millions of dollars in grants for our community and school district. Understandably, there's room for improvement, but much has been done, and more will be done in the months ahead. No one gets to finish everything, but we have put a lot in place, and that will be a solid foundation for the future. Therefore, I am here informing the Medford School Committee that it's my intention to retire from the position of Superintendent of Schools, of Medford Public Schools, at the completion of my contract on June thirtieth, 2018. This decision has been made without reference to any governmental change or any issues that are in our community. It is simply the right period of time for me to spend more time with my family and to pursue special causes and interests that have not been possible, given the schedule and work responsibilities of an active school superintendent. It is my intent and plan to be fully engaged in the months ahead as your superintendent. We have a lot of positive opportunities, some of which we've talked about tonight, ahead of us, and I will do everything possible to optimize and achieve our goals. Furthermore, I will be committed to ensuring a smooth and effective transition to new senior leadership. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just personally want to thank Superintendent, um, obviously, I'm a new mayor, you know, just almost wrapping up the first two years, and I don't know what it would have been had I not had him by my side, um, in charge of the school department. So I thank you personally for staying on, so that we had a smoother transition into my leadership, so thank you very much for, for doing that on behalf of the city of Medford, um, in total. Ms. Vanderklut.
So Roy, we know, know this day would come, but it doesn't make the coming any easier. You've been an exceptional leader for our community. Your commitment and dedication is simply, it, you can't, it can't be, it's unparalleled. Um, I've been on the school committee for a long time, so I've known and been able to work with you for a long time, and I have to tell you, the number of nights that I've found you in your office, night after night after night, ready to respond to any question, ready to, to be there, um, is just unbelievable. And also, as a school committee, we can get to pick up the phone and call the superintendent, and it didn't matter, was it weekend, it didn't matter whether he was on vacation. Um, and so, some of us, uh, many, have talked to him when he was on vacation, and he was always there, ready to answer, answer questions. I think, um, I think of your great compassion, uh, to staff members who were under duress as something that was truly, you know, always unsung, it was always below the level, but when we had a staff member who was going through some crisis, Roy was always there and compassionate for them. His dedication to our students and the whole child approach, uh, I think on some of these things, you, you led the pack, your early childhood education, the Medford Family Network, so important, uh, in our world. No superintendent can be everything to everybody. Yep, superintendents piss people off sometimes, they say no, and you've done that, Roy, and I know that there have been people who've not always been enthusiastic about your leadership, but I, for one, as someone who has sat and worked with you, who've been on many different committees and worked with you, can only say that you have been a remarkable leader for us, your work ethic is, is just the tops, and you have, your dedication to Medford has been absolutely exemplary. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paula, thank you very much.
Ms. Cunha.
Okay, well, I have had the opportunity, and I know what people are going to say out there, oh, you know, the people that always agree with the superintendent. However, my discussion is not about whether I agree or disagree with the superintendent. Here it is, just a thank you for the person that he is. Um, there's been many a times that there are a lot of us that agree or disagree, but this is out of respect, out of respect for the, the gentleman that's here. Um, I've had the opportunity, not only as a Medford School Committee member, but also as a president of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, to actually go around the state with Mr. Bellson, to see how he has represented us, always having us top, um, of, of the list. I know people agree to disagree, but you really don't know it all when, when you're not behind this real, unfortunately, because there are a lot of things that, uh, it's amazing to see. When I went to the State House, and we, there was a discussion, and the superintendent went, and he testified, and there were other superintendents there that day that were testifying. It's amazing to see the amount of people that after they're done with their dis- It's amazing to see the amount of people that after they're done with their discussion, the reporters and other people from the State House, all those superintendents were there, everybody went to Roy. Who did he talk about? He talked about the people in this city, not only the students and the parents, but the teachers and everybody else. Again, you know, I don't want to talk about agreeing or disagreeing, because that's why we're here, to be respectful, behind and in front of the Rio. This is where you come to discuss, this is where you come to, to express what's going on. You know, it's funny, Paula Ledge said something about, you know, he'll answer that phone when he's on vacation, and I remember twelve years ago when I started, and I wanted to bring the summer program into fruition. I remember going to that school the first day, and we had tons of kids there with parents dropping them off, and of course, it was the hottest day, and the summer hadn't even started, and the people in charge had shut the air conditioning on me, and I called him, and he answered, and I'm like, I am sorry, but, and I went into a rage, and he's like, don't worry, he's like, the second I get off the plane, because I'm stepping on the plane, he says, I will call, and that air conditioning was on. So it's, it's things like that that you remember, but honestly, when I've had the opportunity to go around the state, and I've had the opportunity nationally, to tell people that we've had superintendents, it's amazing, because they say, what do you mean, you have a superintendent who's been there all these years? You're lucky if you get someone who stays with you two to three years, and I've seen it. I've seen it in the, in the communities around us. Right now, it's very difficult to get someone who's very qualified, because the candidate pool is not that large. You know, it, it's just amazing, and when people tell me, you work with a school committee, or you work as a school committee, or you actually speak to your superintendent, again, it seemed very strange to me, because I just assumed this is how it goes. I am in total shock when I hear other school committee members across the state that tell me, what are you talking about? What do you mean, you have community participation? I'm like, well, that's why we're here, we're here for the community. They should have participation. Nope, they're not allowed to speak. And so, there are things that we just assume, as a school committee member, as a parent, as a teacher, administrator, what we're used to sometimes, we're just assuming this is how it is across the board, and we're always complaining about what we have. But when you have the opportunity to go outside your city and to see what other things and other people are doing, and other cities and towns are doing, again, there's always improvement, the bar is always raised up high, but to see where we are is just really, you know, it's, I'm, I'm very happy to see it, and I have to say that it's people like the superintendent who go out there with their passion and get what we have, because it's not that easy sometimes. So I want to say thank you to the superintendent.
Thank you. Ms. Kurtz.
Okay, Superintendent Bellson, I want to thank you for fifty years of service. I'm so glad that you stayed on because you, oh, I'm sorry, it's not, oh, sorry. I'm so glad that you were on for our first term, and you made our transition very smooth. You're a great leader. You've always been there for questions, like everybody said, via email, phone call, late nights, late Sundays, for little things that come up, and you've helped assist with, you know, parent inquiries, it's just everything, and, you know, I'm just, I'm really grateful and I'm very fortunate that I got to work with you, and, you know, it's bittersweet news, and, you know, I wish you the best, and I'm, you know, happy to continue working with you for the next six months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the paper, is there a motion to receive and place? You're not blinking up here. Mr. Scarry.
Roy, it's been a long run, it's been a great run, and for anyone to spend fifty years of their life dedicated to education, it's remarkable and it would be commended. And I want you to know, just as one member, my colleagues have said it best, but as one member, Medford is in a better place educationally through your efforts for the last thirty-odd years that you've been running the system. I don't think there is anyone that will master the budget as well as you. We've all had concerns at budget time some years, it's been tough, but you've always found a way to make sure that the needs of our children and our residents are met. And I wish you and Maxine well in your retirement, and don't be a stranger.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mastone.
I want to congratulate you and wish you well, and when you are officially retired, we'll go out for a Guinness.
Go to the food bank.
Mr. Benedetto.
Thank you. So Roy, I've learned a tremendous amount from you, and I've watched blue and white run through your veins, because I know you'll never bleed red, it will always be blue and white. You are a Mustang. You'll always be here, even when you retire, I know, if I call you, you're answering that cell phone, and that's because you're one of the most dedicated men's, men I have ever met in my life, and your service has been phenomenal, and I wish you well, and I'm so glad that you're leaving at a high in your career and leaving us in such great shape. You worked very, very hard to put us where we are now and help us through the hard days. And I wish you well finding a hobby and not driving Maxine crazy, and good luck, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to receive and place this paper on file?
Set the place on file, Madam, ma'am.
Offered by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Ms. Vanderklut. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
It's an extraordinary paper about concussions of all, so don't make a motion.
Oh, I have that.
You have the report, yeah.
Yeah, we're good?
As long as you know, we got it.
Okay. Is there a motion that item twelve, negotiations and legal matters, be moved to the end of the agenda?
So moved by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Mr. Benedetto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's now the end of the meeting. New business, school committee resolution. Be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences to the family of Florence Riley. Mrs. Riley was the mother of Director of Pupil Services Kathleen Medaglio. Be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences to the family of Marie Wilguru Gomez. Mrs. Gomez was the mother of Brooks' teacher, Lauren Gomez. And be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences to the family of Eileen Downing. Mrs. Downing was a teacher at the Franklin School for many years. Could all please rise and have a moment of silence? School Committee Resolution. Be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses congratulations to member Paula Vanderklut on the arrival of her new grandson Ezra Mir Proko. Did I say it correctly? What's it like having a little boy?
Another little boy.
What's it like? Oh, sorry. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunio.
I just wanted to, I want to acknowledge, actually, Mr. John Costas from the Medford Electric for the donation of installations of many of the lights at the Masha Karen Theater. The lighting that he just put in, he donated everything, and he, the, the lights that we have now will enhance the stage and the theater itself, so I just want to see if we could invite Mr. Costas for, he does a lot more than just that for us.
Do we have to contact the guest?
No, we'll come back.
We'll come back, okay.
Well, this was given to me, I didn't, I didn't, I'm just saying, but if we could just invite him the next time we have a meeting?
On the motion that Mr. Costas be invited to the next school committee meeting, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item twelve, negotiations and legal matters, a motion to go into executive session. So moved by Ms. Vanderklut, seconded by Mr. Benedetto. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. We will now enter executive session.